Five fifteen, I shall call this meeting to order. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Ashley, we shall have roll call, please.
Councilmember Crowe?
Yes.
Solby?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Melvinson? Mayor Walrus?
Yes. Well, welcome. We shall start this meeting once again with my quote for the day. Today, I guess I would like to send out a little bit of a tribute to our thirty-ninth First Lady of the United States, who recently passed, if you've been watching, following that in the news. She passed away November nineteenth, twenty twenty-three. Rosalynn Carter was best known for being a leading advocate for women's rights and mental health. And this would be her quote. "Do what you can to show that you care about other people, and you will make our world a better place." Wouldn't that be nice? We all just did that. Okay, we shall move on. We have the agenda before us, and I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda. If anybody would like to add anything, or if not, we'll look at a motion to approve.
Make the motion to approve the agenda as is?
I will second.
All right, first and a second to approve the motion to the agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. We have the citizens' support, citizens' comments portion of our meeting now, and at this time, if anybody would like to come up and approach the council, you're sure welcome to do so.
Good evening. I just wanted to introduce myself. I'm Joe Glassrude, as of yesterday, the new Stevens County Attorney. Our office, as you know, provides city attorney services for Morris, so look forward to working with the city. I have a meeting scheduled with Becca tomorrow, and we'll see what we can get done.
Woo-hoo!
All right, that's all I have. Thank you all.
Welcome, Joe.
Thank you, Joe.
All right. Anybody else would like to approach the council, or now would be the good time for that? Seeing none?
I got a question, I just, nothing again, but just, since the county is a new county attorney, he's automatically our new city attorney, or do we need to make an action on that?
No, because the contract is with the county attorney.
Okay.
Yep.
And that contract runs through?
I'd have to see when it goes through. I think in the next few years.
I'd just remember, catch up where we're at with that.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Good question. We have no public hearings tonight. We shall move on to the reading and approval of our regular reading minutes from November fourteenth, twenty twenty-three.
I will move approval of the eleven fourteen twenty-three regular meeting minutes.
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. And we'll just move on to the condensed version of the same minutes from eleven fourteen twenty-three.
I will move approval of the condensed minutes from November fourteen meeting.
I will second.
All right, motion and a second to approve the condensed version of the minutes. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Next up is our consent agenda, which consists of the audit of city bills, application for exempt permit for the Morris area gymnastics. And we'll need a motion and a second to approve that, and then we can have a discussion.
I will move approval of the items listed on the consent agenda.
I will second.
All right, motion and a second to approve. We'll just throw back to the council for discussion, any items on the consent agenda at all? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. We will move on to petitions, requests, and communications. First up is a donation. We have to accept a donation to the Morris Fire Department.
I'll move to accept the donation to the Morris Fire Department.
I will second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, and that was very generous. That was from Pat Mom, I believe.
Yep.
Sixteen hundred and forty-three dollars and fifty-eight cents. Okay, any discussion on that, or will this, motion to approve, we got a first and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Carry. Next up would be an appointment of Margaret Kutschenreiter to the tree board. Did you want to speak to that at all, Becca, at all, or?
Um, so Margaret, we have Ann Wilson, who is resigning from the board. And then Margaret had offered to take her spot. She is currently a tree steward and an arborist, I believe. Just to note, she is on the planning commission, too. So she, she's requesting to go on the tree board.
Well, I think you'd be hard-pressed to find anybody more qualified than Margaret. I mean, she also is a taught biology out at the university. Very qualified, and it's it's hard to find people to volunteer in general, but let alone find somebody with the kind of background and expertise she has. Back to the council for action on that.
Is, is Kim on that board?
Oh, yeah.
Or you are? Anything you'd like to add? Are you okay? Anything you got, good? All right, well, hey, he's on the board, if it's good, I.
To Kevin's point, right, Margaret taught at the university, she's, has a lot of the backgrounds, right? The only, only to Becca's point about being chair of, of planning commission, depending on what we decide for some of the boards, regulations and bylaws for some of the boards, right? That could make that difficult. Right, which is something that we have to think about.
And we haven't come anywhere on that yet, so. Well, I haven't heard anything that would make me not want to let somebody volunteer for the tree board, so I'll make a motion to appoint Margaret to the tree board.
I would give that a second, and yeah, to having people willing to volunteer and serve on our different boards.
Okay. We have a first and a, we have a motion and a second to appoint Margaret Kutschenreiter to the tree board. We'll have roll call vote on that, please, Ashley.
Councilmember Crowe?
Yes.
Solby?
Yes.
Walrus?
Yes.
Melvinson? Mayor Walrus?
Yes. Okay, we have no ordinances and resolutions. We shall move on to the city managers' reports and recommendations. I guess the first item of discussion, it sounds like we're gonna speak about, have a discussion on East Seventh Street, so perhaps you want to
Yeah.
start that conversation?
Yeah, so surveys were sent out. We sent out a hundred and thirty-one surveys, surveys to property owners. You all saw the survey, it asked them their year and condition of their septics and wells. Kind of gave an estimate of what we'd be looking at, and then had a spot for comment. So out of that, we got fifty back. So out of the fifty, we had nineteen that were in favor, thirty-one that were not. You saw Stacy had put up the results and then kind of put in comments on some of the comments that were, that were given, not in depth. So if you'd like to see that, we can get those for you. So I guess our next step would be to figure out if we are wanting to move forward and figuring out financing, or if we're just going to do the road. So next couple steps could be, do we bring Jeff Coon back in to have some conversations? Do we want to move forward? If we do, you know, we, the next meeting, you'll see some utility rates and different options for, for our utility rates raising, some of our utility rates just to keep our water department, water fund where it needs to be. That was done through a free rate study with Rural Water. If we did a project like this, I guess I would recommend moving forward and doing an actual big in-depth utility rate study, seeing where we would need our rates to be if this project were to happen. I think we would also need to look at putting an ordinance in place that states that if the water sewer is available, that they would have to hook up. Because right now, we don't have that, so you could put the assessment to get it there, but you wouldn't be getting any, they wouldn't be using the water, but we wouldn't be gaining any extra costs with our utility fund for that.
Would that be a phase-in period? Or would you just do a hard, you have to hook up? I mean, as their wells and septics fail?
That would be, that would be something we'd have to see. And that's where doing a utility rate study, you could kind of see what that would look like. I mean, you're adding all this extra cost, and only maybe twenty-five percent of it's assessed. All the rest of your residents who have water sewer are going to be paying that cost until these guys get hooked up, too. So it's a consideration.
But I think we talked at an earlier date, to make it work, we're gonna have to raise the rates. Pretty much double the rates on everybody in the city to make this fly?
Oh, I would, I would say so. I, I think the last thing was, yeah, about two hundred percent, I think, was the last thing.
When we left it, when Jeff last talked to us, was when Blaine was still city manager. We haven't really accomplished anything. I think we need to get Jeff back, see if he's come up with any other funding sources. But unless we can come up with some good funding sources, I just can't see where we can make it work and double everybody's rate. When you have sixty percent of the ones that responded don't want to hook up. And then to have the assessed property values with this addition to doing it, I mean, if people are gonna fight it, I think we're just opening a bag of worms that, as it looks right now, that we just, I don't think want to go there.
You know, I was disappointed, I, I know surveys typically you have a hard time getting responses, but I was just disappointed that we didn't get a better response. I mean, eighty-three of the homeowners out there didn't respond, which I, I guess I'm just disappointed at that end, but, you know, then I read through, as you all did, some of the answers, and, you know, the replies were, if it's affordable, well, I mean, that, that really doesn't help us. If it's affordable, I mean, if it's affordable to Jeff, or if it's affordable to Brian, those are two different, you know, situations.
Most definitely.
What's affordable mean?
It'd be very affordable to Brian, and I can't afford it.
But, yeah.
I'd gladly pay for your water if you hook up. No, a, a good point, the different people, different scenarios. I talked to a guy this morning in his eighties and said, I'm only gonna be in my house maybe five more years. So he said, it's no value to me. He's, he's one that's fought it with me privately. He's been to some meetings and hasn't said a word, but, and, you know, your mother, I mean.
Yeah.
It just.
Yeah, it's just, I mean, and it's not all about my mom, I just, everybody out there knows. It's not where my, I mean, obviously, I care.
The seniors that are still in their property for a hit like this, but I think we need to get more info. We need to get Jeff, see if he's come up with any other funding sources, or if there's any chance, or who we need to talk to, or with the state, to try to find out if there's any help, and if there's any chance of us doing some of these things, to maybe trying to jump over this project and go to the next one, and see if we can figure out something, because it's not something we're gonna get figured out short term. It's gonna take some time. And it's, if, if we're gonna do the water and sewer in the next five years, it's stupid to do the street in two years, and to, to push it back. And if, if we can agree that we're not gonna get the water and sewer done, then go ahead, let's get the street done, but.
Well, that issue is the one point six million dollar grant, and that's,
Yep.
you know, brings us right back to that again. And, you know, if we decide to pass on that one point six million on this project, it's earmarked for this project, so we can't move those monies to a, say, another street if we would so choose?
That I don't know.
That, that's, I think that's something that.
State aid road.
Just a state aid road.
It's what the federal funding qualifies for.
Right. Is Pacific, is Pacific state aid?
Portion, right, and then they talked about the infrastructure center needs a different spot.
Yeah.
Which Jeff can touch on.
Well, I think that's a good idea, that Jeff come back, we touch on that, and just get straight on that, after some of the responses here.
Yeah, I'm glad we sent out the survey. I mean, we gave people an opportunity, and whether or not they chose to participate, that's their choice. But I think we have a pretty good pulse for where the majority of them, you know, where the majority of them feels. Good.
Yeah, it's, it's to everyone's point, right? Like, we got fifty responses out of.
Hundred and thirty-one?
Yeah, about half, right? Which is.
That's less than half, but.
Forty-seven percent.
Yeah.
I'm rounding, I'm rounding out, thank you. But, you know, some of the, but what I wanted to point out is that the responses here are, they're very, there's, there's a couple that are very, you know, wishy-washy, you know, basic about their response, but most of them are firm yes or firm no, right? It, at least is what it feels, and, and, you know, or someone has already taken it upon themselves to do something in this area, right? So it, to everyone's point, right? Like, it'd be, it'd be positive to have Jeff back in, but I think we're probably gonna have to make a decision one way or the other here in short order. Right, so time is of the essence on this.
Any other discussion on the East Seventh Street project? Okay, we'll just maybe get Jeff back here, and we can
Yep.
chat again.
You, you want me to go on then?
Yeah, you can just move on to the city manager's newsletter. I'm sorry, yeah, I suppose I should.
No, that's all right.
As long as we're done chatting about the East Seventh Street, we'll move on to the city manager's newsletter.
Yeah.
That's what you were waiting for, okay.
Um, so Friday, no, you're fine. Friday, we have the tour of the city buildings. We'll start up at City Hall at eighteen. So your schedule is there. I'll have one for you that morning, too, so we all kind of know where we're, where we're going. Let, not last week, the week before, I went to, to the Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities Fall Conference. Was there Thursday and Friday. So they started out with a panel on environmental justice, which is basically concerns on how much pollution is going into which areas and cities. There was a lot of back and forth on, you know, is this, the regulations that are being put out, are they hurting businesses coming into town? So Coalition is gonna work on, to make sure that the proposals don't undermine environmental goals and economic growth. We went on a tour of the city of Wilmer, which was very fun to see what they use their local sales tax for, which we'll get into the local sales tax later. But they use their, that for their civic center, their parks, so their Robins Island Park, if you've ever been there, is a very nice ADA compliant park. We toured a couple of their HRA apartment buildings, which was a really nice facility that they, they did a TIF housing development area. Not quite sure how much the HRA paid to put those up, but they were very nice facilities that were all full. Saw their industrial park. Very, like I said, the biggest thing I took away from that was their local sales tax. I asked, I asked their administrator there how, how we can come into that and do something like that, which, as you'll see later on, they talk about, the Coalition is, there's a moratorium on sales tax. So you have to, have to get the state to approve your local sales tax, and then the citizens to approve the local sales tax. And you have to have certain projects that it falls into. So right now, the state has a moratorium on it. The Coalition is trying to push it so where cities can have their citizens basically approve it, and not the state with just different, you know, different areas on what you can and can't do with it. So I know, like, Marshall, they just had, in November, an election for the local sales tax to use for a pool. So they're gonna redo their pool. And they talked a lot here on how different cities are using it for streets, so street work and repair. So Rochester got it, Duluth got it, then little cities started asking for it, and they said, no, can't use it for that. So that's some other things that the Coalition is trying to help rural cities with, trying to get some of these things that the bigger cities are getting to kind of filter down for us, too.
Those that implemented that tax, did they speak to how much the tax was?
So it's only, so in Wilmer, I asked her about it, and it's only like a two percent, one or two percent. It's very, it's very minimal. And she, they get, which they have a lot more, probably, people going in and shopping, but over, oh, how much did she say? Was it one point five million they get in sales tax dollars a year? But, yeah, I can't remember. I know I saw quite a bit in Marshall's, just because the proximity to over there, but theirs was just very minimal, too. Like a one percent, I think, is their sales tax that they add on to things.
Well, I think we all know, you know, that the, the pool is still a live issue in our city. You know, if you ask a lot of people to spend a little, never know, might help.
Yeah.
Something to think about.
Yeah, speaking of pools, I know that, so I'm meeting with the administrators around the area on Thursday, and the gentleman who's interim for Appleton said that they are having in January a meeting about pools, because Madison is looking to, to do a pool, and I think Appleton is needing a new one. I don't know. So it'd be interesting to sit in on those conversations with them, too. Yeah, and then, listened on Friday to an attorney from Flaherty and Hood about employee relations and different union contracts, which is really, was really good to hear, since we're still in the midst of two union negotiations here. So he spoke a little bit on the earned sick and safe time, and then he touched a little bit, not too much, on the cannabis law and the extended family leave. So since those two are gonna be out a little bit, he didn't speak tons to it. The only thing he did kind of touch on with the cannabis is, you know, a lot of the tax dollars coming from that will be, are already earmarked for other things. So not a lot, I think he said, if you do have a facility that sells it in your city, that you'd get a certain percentage of that coming back to your city. But otherwise, the rest of it's all earmarked out. And then they talked about the next legislative session, some of the things that they're working on. So they work a lot with the water, wastewater infrastructure. They talked about PFA requesting a hundred and ninety-nine million, and there are already projects out there totaling more than four hundred and eighty million dollars in requests. So that's where, you know, some of that, you know, we could always ask the legislatures for money for some of the Seventh Street project, but you're looking at a few years out if you decide to go that way and hope that there's a bonding bill that someone will put us into. But that's, that's an option, to have those discussions if we go that route. They're looking at getting funding for the lead line replacement, focusing on childcare, and they, yeah, they would like to eliminate income restriction for housing, TIF for Greater Minnesota, so. Yeah, so that was, that was that conference, really good conference to go and listen to. Think this was the first time I was, I listened to the environmental justice stuff, so that was, that was a new thing to learn about, so. And then the last thing I have on here is our second meeting in December. So at the last meeting, we kind of discussed certain days to look at. So I know the two days that were kind of floated around were the eighteenth and the twenty-first. I guess with the eighteenth being so close to our last, our meeting prior, which would be on the twelfth, I guess if it works for everyone, I would say the twenty-first, which would be that Thursday.
I guess I can make it work.
I would like to see it go to Thursday, the twenty-first, just gives us a few days after our previous meeting, and so we're not messing around in that week of Christmas with, with the Sunday, Monday, Tuesday being full, and then for people trying to come back, or a lot of people take that week and just go and do holiday or travel.
Yeah, I should be totally fine with that.
I would make that a motion to change our council meeting, the second meeting in December, to Thursday, the twenty-first, at five fifteen.
Do we have to approve that motion? Got a second? We'll just make it formal?
I'll second.
Got a motion and a second to approve the meeting change date in December, the fourth Tuesday, from, to Thursday, December twenty-first. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Carry. Thursday, the twenty-first, it is then.
Is there anything with Friday, Friday thinking about going to Treatment Plant and all that? Do we need, I assume clothes, clothes, toed shoes, but do we, I don't think we need steel toes, would we?
I don't think so.
Or any other safety?
No one told me that we needed any of that. I can check. I can check.
I wouldn't think so, but it's always worth just asking.
Breakfast is served, eight to eight fifteen at City Hall. What are you making?
Does that on there, too? I didn't see that.
Sure, bring donuts.
Did you hear that? Bring it, bring the donuts.
Careful what you wish for.
Anything else on the city manager's newsletter? Hearing none, I guess we can move on to mayor and city council board updates. If anybody has anything to, they would like the council to be aware of, now would be the time for that.
So we didn't have a planning commission. Probably December will be the next one. And tree board, we talked about presenting a, I guess at the next meeting, planting plan for the screen planting this next year.
For the Arbor Day.
For the Arbor Day planting.
Okay. Good to go.
Park Board, we met, discussed handicap playground equipment. There's a member that's got a handicapped child, and saying there's a number of handicapped children in town, and there is no swings or any equipment for handicaps. So I just was handed some stuff for a meeting tonight on that, and gonna look at, maybe looking at some of the service clubs to see if they can help us out, to do something with that. I think we're gonna skip a December meeting, and meet again in January, was the plan. Highlighted some of the items in budget, and working on trying to do bathrooms and the concession stand, and progress, or where we can go for some funding on that also. There again, like everything else, where do you come up with the funds to do some of these big ticket items, so.
Yeah, we want to redo that, all that stuff at Wells Park, and, you know, that. you know, that's concession stand and all that, so that has to be handicapped and accessible as well, so. But, yeah, to your point with sidewalks and all that stuff, we'll maybe have to have, we could probably commit a whole work session just to that.
Mm-hmm.
along, so we can nail that down, because I think we're a little bit kind of all over the board there. All right, any other board updates at all? I guess, uh, any other business, uh, or to come before the council? I guess I can share a couple of little things, obviously, we, well, just to let everybody know, we finished up our resiliency week and a half period there, when Guido was here, and we finalized a five-year plan, so that went, that, that went really good, Becca, didn't you?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, it was pretty well attended, and, so now we have a plan. Uh, Guido, he departed, and actually was off to, I think, somewhere in the southern part of the state to do kind of a similar planning session with some other cities, so it's nice to see him, he's a good resource for us. Um, and the last thing, I guess I would like to ask, any update on the charter commission, Becca?
We're meeting on tomorrow to go over some of that stuff.
Perfect.
Yes.
Okay, that's all the update I need, then. All right, any other business to come before the council? Hearing none?